Welcome to the September seventeenth council meeting. Let's begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you. Item two, item three, rather, confirmation of the agenda, resolution?
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of September seventeenth, 2025.
Moving second, Deputy Mayor Barber and Consulier de Rosier. All those in favor? As Kerry, thank you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Consulier Barber?
In accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I, William Barber, have pecuniary interest with respect to item six point one point one, school crossing guard service delivery update. I therefore declare disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof as follows. I am the owner of Inclusive Communities, which is the provider for crossing guard service. I would request these items be considered separately from the consent agenda. I do therefore agree not to take part in the discussion of or vote on any question in respect to the matter and shall not attempt in any way, whether before, during, or after the meeting, to influence the voting on any such question.
Thank you very much, Consulier. When we get this to items six, we will pull six point one. Thank you. Any other declarations of pecuniary? No delegations or public meetings. They probably go to six, consent agenda, and we will pull six point one and we'll let you know when we're finished. Thank you. Okay, do we have a separate resolution for six one?
The resolution agreed that council receive for information report clerk twenty nine, twenty nine dash twenty five, school crossing guard service delivery update.
Moving secondary, Consulier Rahi and Consulier Ozlach. Any questions, discussion, comments, anything? Okay, seeing Consulier Rahi.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I think it, I think it makes sense to hopefully hire someone part time this way and we have a long term solution to it. So, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? And that is Kerry. So, I'll ask William to come back in. Have you have a resolution for the remainder of the consent agenda?
That the September seventeenth, 2025 consent agenda be received for information, excluding item six point one point one, and that the included recommendations within the staff reports be adopted and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on September third, 2025.
Moving secondary, Deputy Mayor Barber, Consulier Chapman. Discussion? Consulier de Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question I have is in regard to six point one point three, the subdivision agreement for Cottonwood Hills Phase Three. The question that I have is reviewing the agreement. I didn't see anything specifically in there, but I thought I would check with the planning department. Is there any parkland that's been secured with this development agreement? And then, the second question I have is, has trail connectivity been incorporated to ensure the agreement, in the agreement to support active transportation in the neighborhood? Thank you.
Through you, your worship, to Consulier de Rosier. In my report, I highlight that this was a draft plan approved subdivision from nineteen ninety-nine. This is phase two of that plan, or sorry, phase three of that draft plan. There's already been phase one and phase two. Phase three consists only of what you see in my report, which is the extension of Aspen Parkway, Cottonwood Boulevard, the creation of Balsam Way, as well of the lots that would be on both Aspen Parkway and Cottonwood Boulevard. This phase three does not include any parkland whatsoever. We cannot go back on the owner and request for any previous parkland. Those conditions are set. However, the owner is interested in pursuing a new draft plan of subdivision. It's been identified on my, the drawing in figure one as future phase four. Within that, there is a block, I believe there's two blocks actually identified for parkland. In terms of active transportation, as I said, this isn't existing, it's a legacy file, it's an existing draft plan of subdivision. We are unable to ask for any active transportation through the existing phases. We can ask for those type of things in the future phase.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the resolution, and that is Kerry. Thank you very much. We go to act, action item seven, Chief Administrator Officer Elmer Library Donations. We have the resolution.
That report CAO thirty-six dash twenty-five respecting Elmer Library donations be received for information and that council establish a library redevelopment and Old Town Hall revitalization donations reserve fund.
Moving secondary, Deputy Mayor Barber and Consulier Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I should note that in the report I reference A L E S, however, the group's actually known by D A L E S, so apologies for that. To provide a brief overview, this report represents a first step towards the launch of fundraising for the Elmer Library redevelopment. We're hopeful that in October, we will have, or November, hopefully October, we will have three conceptual designs along with a high level costing before council for decision upon what detailed engineering design to, to advance. Once a design is selected, we can finish and present a specific pledge related policy so that we can get council direction on items such as placking, room naming, or other sponsorship opportunities. It's hard to do that until we know what the actual building looks like. At that point, we'll be close to a full launch of fundraising. We hope to allow local grassroots groups to work independently. However, we'll also be there to establish a process for the town to take donations directly, and we'll have an associated website, which could have online capabilities for people to make donations. For accounting purposes, it's important to note that the town cannot return funds after donation. One, a part, part of the accounting relates to the issuance of charitable tax receipts, but it also goes into our annual statements of our financial position, so we're not able to return the funds. To address this, staff are suggesting that it be clear that funds could be used for repairs to the Old Town Hall as well as the library redevelopment. If however, there are people who are reluctant to pay funds at this time, there will be the pledge policy that will be brought forward to council for endorsement, so they still will have an opportunity to, to come forward and, and put their support behind this project. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you. Questions? Consulier de Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The note that the donations for the redevelopment project could also be used for Old Town Hall, you said you were going to clearly communicate that, is that going to be on the website? Or how, how do we plan to make sure that's clear so there isn't any discrepancies with residents?
Good question. Yes, through you, yeah, the treasurer will make sure that we put it prominently on the website so that everybody is aware.
Any other questions? I just want to make sure that people understand that when we're talking about not returning donations, we're only talking about cash donations, pledges are entirely different matter. Because pledges are tied to a specific kind of bill, so we need to have that specific kind of bill, otherwise the pledges can be returned. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? As Kerry, thank you. Seven point two, award for the Integrity Commissioner Services Resolution?
That report clerk twenty-eight dash twenty-five regarding the award of a request for proposal for Integrity Commissioner Services be received for information and that council award the contract of Integrity Commissioner Services to ADR Chambers for a two-year term with optional annual renewal, and that council direct staff to bring forward a bylaw to appoint Michael Manard of ADR Chambers as the Integrity Commissioner for the town of Elmer.
Moving secondary, Consulier Chapman and Consulier Ozlach.
Yes, through the mayor and to council. This report is before council, following up on a request of council in April for staff to issue an RFP for this service. So, all municipalities under the municipal act must appoint an integrity commissioner. This RFP was issued on July seventh, and it closed on August fourteenth. We circulated it to eleven integrity commissioner firms, which we were aware of, as well as posted it on the town's website. We received interest from a number of firms, but we only received two proposals in the end from ADR Chambers and Bogosian and Allen. Both proponents were highly qualified. We followed the evaluation process outlined in the RFP, which had a weighted score for the technical submission as well as the financial submission. The financial submission for both firms, they were within five dollars of each other. The higher ranked firm was ADR Chambers. Due to their, some of the things which were noted were servicing similar sized municipalities like ours, as well as local municipalities, as well as their early resolution and alternative dispute resolution practices, which could potentially reduce costs in this service area. The financial impacts, their rate is three hundred dollars an hour, does have no retainer, and the costs will be accommodated within our annual budgeting process. And with that, the recommendation is that we appoint ADR Chambers for a two-year term.
Thank you. Questions? Council? Deputy Mayor Barber? Does the agreement have a continuation process or a renewal process after the end of the ten years, or, sorry, after the end of two years?
It does have an annual renewal built into it. If the, the council of that time wishes to renew, we'll also be aligned at that point with the County of Elgin's renewal with ADR Chambers as well.
Consulier de Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation before council is for a two-year contract term. With a new term of council on the horizon, I'm just wondering if it'd be more appropriate to enter into a one-year agreement, if that's possible, and allow the next term of council to determine who they wish to use for the services.
That's up to council. Consulier Chapman?
Through you, your worship. I have no problem with the two-year term. There's noth- When council first starts, they don't always know what they're looking for, and to ask them to look for something without any background would not necessarily be in their favor. So, by giving, we know what we're looking for, and by giving a two-year, they can always, in their, their second term, choose someone else.
Deputy Mayor Barber? I also support the two-year term. New council, no matter who they are, will have enough on their plate to begin with, and this is an item that is probably beyond their scope initially, and give them a chance to, to work into the position. Consulier de Rosier?
So, a follow-up question to that would be if the new term of council comes into play and they don't support this integrity commissioner, is there an option to cancel a contract for council?
Through the mayor and to Consulier de Rosier. There are, there are exit clause provisions within the contract. The new term of council would receive a report on integrity commissioner services within the, the first quarter, because if they wanted to proceed with another RFP, we would need some time to, to do that as well. This contract will expire September of twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, anyone else? Consulier Barber? Consulier Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. Sixty cents a kilometer doesn't seem too bad, but three hundred dollars an hour I still think is ridiculous for one person, so I just wanted to add that in. I don't care if it's a one-year or two-year deal, it doesn't really matter to me.
Consulier de Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this is a very sensitive subject for me specifically. Our municipality's past experience with integrity commissioners have been frankly embarrassing, not only in the practice undertaken, but the quality and the professionalism of the reports that were produced. Our municipality's last investigation was reviewed by the Law Society of Ontario, which determined it had been mishandled and subsequently referred the matter to the Ontario Obedsman. When the Obedsman began investigating, the commissioner resigned, and a simple internet search will show that this is a consistent reoccurring pattern for his professional history. When Mr. Manard came recommended by that same integrity commissioner, it obviously raised serious concern. With that said, based on experience, I'm informed of the legislation now and the alternatives that are available, and I would like it noted on public record, should this investigator act outside of the bounds of professionalism or due process, as we saw in our last, I will not hesitate to escalate the matter immediately through the appropriate oversight authorities, and I will ensure that this is made public in the interest of accountability and transparency. Thank you.
Comment?
Certainly, at, at some point, there's a need for me to, to say something to prevent the potential for litigation against our municipality. I don't believe the Law Society does review the work of integrity commissioners. Certainly, as a private member of council, you're free to make whatever statements you want, it's just in the public record, it needs to be reflected that these aren't the statements of, of Elmer council. Or, or of, we had a retiree, he wasn't determined, he, he left, it wasn't, the former integrity commissioner did not leave because of performance of duties, there was no issues raised by council as a whole of performance of duties.
Okay, one, one more comment, because I think-
No, I appreciate that, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on Andy's comments, the Law Society did investigate Mr. Swayze under, he is a law professional, so he was investigated under the Law Society. Case number one six zero seven eight nine, W six V eight P O, and I made that public on my social media. I did file that as an independent, not as a member of council or not as a council reflecting of council's decision. I'm entitled to that right, and that investigation did in fact happen, and they did refer me to the Obedsman. So, that did happen, and regardless of what his reasoning was, the timeline is pretty coincidental, so especially given his history. So, thank you very much, CEO Grzel, for that, making that clear, but the facts are the facts.
Just want to point out, this is not about the past integrity commissioner. This resolution has about the appointment of a new commissioner, it's nothing, nothing to do with the past commissioner at all. And having been part of the RFP, you can be assured that we looked very carefully at this person, and I, you know, we had a rigorous RFP examination of the applications, and certainly Mr. Chambers came out as the best person, and I believe he is the best person, and this has absolutely nothing to do with our former integrity commissioner, and I do not think we should make any further comments about our former integrity commissioners. Okay, thank you. Let's go on with, any other comments on this?
Deputy Mayor Barber?
This particular item is a forty-five thousand dollar touch that hopefully we can avoid in the future relating to the, the cost for the, the preceding matters. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all of those in favor of the resolution? Opposed? There's one, okay. And it is Kerry, thank you. New business and matters of urgency? See done? Reading of bylaws and proceedings are on? Owen?
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw fifty-four dash twenty-five being a bylaw to change the composition of the town of Elmer council and amend the procedural bylaw zero seven dash eighteen. Bylaw fifty-five dash twenty-five being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement with the town of Elmer and Aqua for the operation of the town's wastewater system. Bylaw fifty-six dash twenty-five being a bylaw to prohibit and regulate nuisance lighting. Bylaw fifty-seven dash twenty-five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council held on September third, 2025. Bylaw fifty-eight dash twenty-five being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement between Sifton Properties Limited and the Corporation of the Town of Elmer to provide for the development of the Cottonwood Hills subdivision phase three plan of subdivision. Bylaw fifty-nine dash twenty-five being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Badger Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated for sewer flushing camera program.
Moving secondary, Consulier Chapman, Consulier Ozlach. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Barber? Thank you, worship. Nine three one, bylaw fifty-four twenty-five. I've wavered back and forth on this particular matter. I've come to the conclusion that if the municipality is going to be better served by having the deputy mayor selected from the, the vote position on, on the election for council, if it, on the other side of it, if we had have not had an election, because there were enough candidates for council and a separate voting for deputy mayor, and any of those persons could have made a competent counselor, I, I think that that, that one slate of candidates probably would be better for the town, and I'll go along with that concept. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, that is Kerry, thank you. Inquiries by members? Consulier de Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past summer, I've had several inquiries from residents regarding the condition of the old carnation plant site, particularly the overgrowth of grass and weeds. Given that this property sits along our main street, its current state presents a concern for both appearance and community pride, so my question for staff, if they could answer, is whether the town has authority under the Property Standards Act or other bylaws to require the site be maintained? And number two, what steps could be taken to ensure this property is kept in an acceptable condition moving forward? Thank you.
Owen?
Yes, through the mayor and to Consulier de Rosier. We've been in contact with, with the owners of that property earlier this week, I believe. In fact, we were in contact a couple of weeks ago, but we've since corresponded with them directly, they will be cleaning up the property. There are tools within our property standards, or, I forget what, it used to be called the cleaning and clearing bylaw, I believe it's called the property maintenance bylaw now. But there are tools in that that we can use to, you know, ensure the property owners clean up their, their properties and their grass.
Deputy Mayor Barber? Just to follow up to Consulier de Rosier's question, I previously brought this matter to the attention of staff and was assured that it would be looked after. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those, I guess, yeah, it's not a resolution, sorry. Anyone else on inquiries? Statements and committee reports? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, your worship. This afternoon, the Elmer Secondary Water Board met, one of the items that was being discussed was the 2026 budget, and in accordance with the, the water rate survey, which were in the last year of, the recommendation was a three point five percent increase into the wholesale cost of water, subject to a, a slight revision based on a different accounting standard, but it's running true to course, and another wait, water rate study will be conducted in 2026 for the following five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have no report? Oh, you had, you had a- Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor. Since the start of the school year, I've received numerous comments from parents and community members regarding the new sidewalk on John Street South. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive, highlighting both appreciation for the addition and recognition of the safety improvements it's provided for students and pedestrians. This new infrastructure has addressed many safety concerns in the area, and residents are grateful for the town's commitment to enhancing pedestrian infrastructure. I just wanted to take a moment to share this community feedback and express gratitude to staff and council for prioritizing this important improvement. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, anyone else? I do not have a report. Are there any notices of motion? Consulier de Rosier?
Thank you. Whereas, the town of Elmer has hosted several new community events over the past summer, providing opportunities for community engagement, local business promotion, and increased civic pride. And whereas, community events contribute to social cohesion, foster a sense of belonging, support local businesses, and enhance overall quality of life for residents. And whereas, feedback from these events has highlighted both success and areas for improvement, including coordination, logistics, volunteer management, safety considerations, and communication with residents. And whereas, a standardized framework for planning and executing community events can improve efficiency, ensure consistency, and establish clear expectations for organizers, volunteers, and staff. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to prepare a policy for community events in the town of Elmer, incorporating lessons learned and feedback from recent events. The policy should include, but be not limited to, event planning and approval process, role and responsibilities for staff, volunteers, and external organizers, health, safety, and accessibility standards, guidelines for making, for marketing and communications, budgeting and financial oversight, post-event evaluation and feedback mechanisms. Be it further resolved that this draft be presented to council for review and approval prior to its implementation to ensure alignment with the town's strategic goals and community values. Thank you.
You would like that notice at the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm going to back up for one second just to remind people that in the report of the mayor, that this Friday, we have the Heritage Festival, so all of you out there, come and see all of the various great things that have been planned for three days. Friday night it begins, and then Saturday, and then Sunday as well. So, see you there. Okay, meeting close to the public, resolution?
That council moves into a meeting close to the public at seven twenty-seven PM for the consideration of the following. Chief Administrative Officer reports CAO thirty-seven dash twenty-five, boundary adjustment negotiations. Chief Administrative Officer reports CAO 37-25, boundary adjustment negotiations. And Chief Administrative Officer reports CAO 38-25, EECC negotiations. And that consideration of these items is close to the public pursuant to section 239 2K of the Municipal Act as amended as the subject matters pertain to a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on the behalf of the municipality or local board.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, Councilor Barbara and, again, Councilor DeRosier. All those in favor, as carried, we have brief recess, and we will move into close.
Okay, welcome back. Resolution coming out closed.
That council rise from meeting close to the public at 8:05 PM and reports the following. That report CAO 37-25 respecting the boundary adjustment be received for information. And that council request the Ministry of Municipal Affairs appoint a provincial intervenor to assist in the township of Malahide and township of, and town of Elmer in the proposed boundary adjustment. And that council provided, receive for information and provided direction to the CAO on report CAO 38-25 respecting EECC negotiations.
Moving on to secondary, Council de Rosier and Deputy Mayor Barber. All those in favor, as carried, resolution to adjourn?
That council do now adjourn at 8:05 PM.
Moving on to secondary, Council Barber and Council Chapman. All those in favor, as carried. Thank you. Have a good day.